Thank you all for joining us for the Tuesday, April 1st Planning Commission Work Session. Director Russell?
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the April 1st Portsmouth Planning Commission Meeting. We have four agenda items and then we have just a few additional that are non-action items for your consideration today. And we're going to start, I'm gonna start, with honorary street name designation request. So we have Mrs. Peace Branch with us here this evening, and she is the applicant for honorary street name designation request 2501. And it is a request to change in an honorary status Randolph Street, one block of Randolph Street between Des Moines Avenue and Lansing Avenue. The predominant zoning pattern in the area is urban residential. The aerial to the left shows the location of the proposed street name change. Want to point out that the Zion Church where Reverend Dr. Peace served for many years is on the same block as the proposed name change. And so this graphic shows you the intersection with Randolph and Lansing, and the next one should show the intersection of Randolph and Des Moines Avenue. Again, the predominant character in the area is residential with the exception of the church, which is an institutional use. And it is our policy that honorary street name changes look like a brown sign with white lettering on top of the official sign. So we just have a couple here to show that, one on the peninsula and then the others we just grabbed from Google Images. We don't have a long enough history in Portsmouth, Virginia to have our own yet. And so there's only been one request so far, and that you considered in earlier this year that was on Rapidan Street. And when that one is that, we will use that sign. Wanted to include this sign to evidence for planning commissioners and the audience that we use a number of mechanisms to notify the public of these proposed changes, which include a public hearing advertisement. We post a sign on or near the property, and so this is a one-block area. The sign is posted at the church. And then we also notify adjacent property owners. The applicant has also notified property owners whose addresses front on this portion of the right-of-way, and to date, we have received no responses in opposition to the proposal. Happy to answer any questions from the commission. Spam.
Commissioner.
My name?
Commissioner Jigges.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with, and just, and we have to be careful with this and make sure we pronounce it as Zion United Church of Christ.
Yes, ma'am.
Because there is a Zion Baptist Church, and we want to make that differentiation.
Zion Bethlehem United Church of Christ, 1617 Des Moines Avenue.
Yeah, not Zion, but yeah, we have to, we have to make, because obviously, we have a Zion Baptist Church here in the city.
Any other commissioners, any questions or thoughts? Perfect.
Our next agenda item. So we should, we should do, let's do the zoning ordinance amendment first, is that okay?
Sure.
As opposed to the use permit. And so we have a request, application by S. Riggs to amend City Code Chapter 40.2 our zoning ordinance to include a seaplane base as a listed permitted use with a use permit to operate a seaplane base within a giving zoning district. And Mrs. Valerie Malzone will make the presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Valerie Malzone. I'm the principal planner with the City of Portsmouth, and the first applicant, or the second application before you today is a request for a zoning text amendment, Z2402. The amendment is intended to provide a suitable means to operate a seaplane service in the city with an approved use permit. The request consists of four updates to the zoning ordinance, and we will go through each one throughout the presentation and the staff report materials. All of the added language is indicated with underlining. All uses operating within the city that are subject to the regulations of the zoning ordinance must be categorized under a use definition. The first proposed amendment is the addition of a use definition for seaplane base. The applicant has provided the following definition for a seaplane base: An area of water used or intended for the landing and takeoff of aircraft together with a pertinent buildings and facilities. The second amendment adds the seaplane base to the use table, permitting the use to operate in the downtown urban core or D1T6 zoning sub-district with an approved use permit, as indicated with the letter U under the D1T6 zoning district. The use will be prohibited in all other zoning districts as indicated by the blank spaces under the remaining zoning district. The D1T6 zoning sub-district extends along the Elizabeth River from Crawford Parkway to Wavy Street. This zoning district is designated for high-density and waterfront-mixed uses. Amendment three is proposed by staff to update the minimum off-street parking standards table to indicate that the use will not require any off-street vehicle parking. Staff has also included an amendment which adds seaplane base to Article 6 of the zoning ordinance in what is essentially the glossary section of the zoning ordinance. Due to the location of the D1T6 zoning sub-district along the Elizabeth River and the nature of the proposed use, the applicant and city staff participated in community outreach to engage parties that may be affected by the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. This included the Hampton Roads Transit, HRT, the Department of the Navy, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the City of Norfolk, the Virginia Maritime Association, and that's all I have listed. The Army Corps of Engineers required the applicant to submit an environmental assessment. Several parties provided comment on the environmental assessment during the review process. At this time, the Department of the Navy provided a comment letter detailing the necessity for real-time communications during proposed seaplane operations and providing a list of comments and concerns related to flight operations in the proximity of Navy assets. The Virginia Maritime Association and the United States Coast Guard were among other agencies to provide comment. These comments you will find at the end of the environmental assessment, which is attachment E of the use permit application staff report packet. The planning department has since received additional public comments regarding this application. Hampton Roads Transit, or HRT, provided a comment letter in opposition to the proposal citing concerns over the proposed use posing a safety risk to passenger ferries in the proposed, operating in the area. The City of Norfolk has also submitted a comment letter in opposition to the proposed use citing safety concerns due to the large number of vertical obstructions within the area. Two additional public comments were submitted in support of this application. The HRT letter was included in the staff report packet, City of Norfolk letter, and the two letters in support have been provided to you today at your seat. Planning staff is recommending approval of the zoning text amendment application. Staff finds that the D1T6 zoning sub-district is generally suitable for seaplane operations. The use permit requirement authorizes city council to review each proposed seaplane operation on a case-by-case basis and address, while imposing conditions as necessary, to minimize adverse effects from the use and address concerns raised by affected parties. Seaplane activities within navigable waterway, while not regulated by the city, are heavily regulated by other federal agencies, such as the U.S. Coast Guard and the Federal Aviation Administration. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit to operate a seaplane base at 10 Crawford Parkway. Consideration of that use permit application, UP2403, by city council, will be contingent upon their approval of this zoning text amendment request. That concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Out of all of those folks that you listed, only two were in opposition, and that was Hampton Roads Transit, which operates the ferry, and the City of Norfolk, which probably wishes the seaplane was in their city. I know they cited safety.
Oh, yeah, so they were the only ones to submit something that says, "We are in opposition." Some of the other comments, you'll notice, it's more of a list of things they would like to see the proposal operate under. So that's the Department of the Navy, Virginia Maritime Association, their comments were not for or against, just here's what we'd like to see in the operation.
Right, and in the packet that we got, it seemed like, from what I read, that their concerns were addressed by coastal seaplanes.
Yes, either by coastal seaplanes or in the proposed conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners?
I do have some questions with regards to what our position is as a commission with this. I know that most of the regulation is done, as you stated, by Coast Guard and FAA. Do we have any feedback or any results from those two organizations?
From the FAA, I can have, I will defer to the applicant on anything from the FAA. We have a letter from the Coast Guard in the environmental assessment, and they found that the U.S. Coast Guard did not pose any significant concerns. And then he has certification from the Virginia Department of Aviation, so on the state level, but yes, from what I've gathered.
Commissioner Malzone?
Just go over that. So there was, I saw the comments from the Coast Guard about the environmental protection, right, of the Elizabeth River. However, if there's going to be a seaplane base established here, especially in that zoning, has the Coast Guard approved of that location? Is there going to be any private aid to navigation, that location that designates that sea base zone, you know, because if approved, you know, we still need their authorities to approve that. For the environmental, I saw that, sorry, coastal planes went to the chief of Waterways Management, which is the correct person to go to, but that was for environmental. So now, if we're talking about actually operating, their party need to be evolved and say, hey, yes, we approve, no, we don't approve, because probably not in this picture, but another picture that shows the landing area of the seaplanes, there's going to have to be some changes. And then from a search and rescue standpoint, they're going to have to be ready and know that, hey, there's potential that a seaplane can go down and that they need resources to go out and save those people. And now, obviously, you have the Navy right there and the Coast Guard too, operating in that vicinity. There's a lot of moving traffic, and that's what the Norfolk City manager was speaking of. I didn't know if Portsmouth, if you all had any concerns about the tall buildings as well, so just, just wanted to put that out there before operating here, that, hey, we should probably reach back out to the Waterways Management Chief and see if they approve operating in this area. Environmental protection, they're fine with operating in Elizabeth City, but in this area, are they okay?
Yeah, and I'm definitely encouraged that to be a question of the applicant, because some of that was not stated directly in the application. The only thing I can speak to from the application is, did the U.S. Coast Guard review that specific takeoff and landing area? The answer to that would be yes, in that that was designated in the environmental assessments middle.
Okay.
I have a question. The location of the base, from what I've read, is going to be at Tybore Yacht out on the end of Pier D. Those pictures are not where that is going to, that's a little, I'm just saying, that's a little misleading. That's Crawford Bay, that's Harbor Towers, and that's not where it's going to be.
Yes.
In that little inlet there.
Sorry, that will be addressed during the use permit. So since this is a zoning text amendment, I did the whole area in which one should operate.
Okay. I just didn't want anybody to think, oh, that's where he's going to land and take off from.
To be considered.
It's where we used to have Portside. Yeah, no.
One other question. Have we, do we, have we heard from the, I'm not sure who it is at this time, the owners of the former Holiday Inn site? I know that's a very coveted site on the ocean, on the waterfront there, and how this will impact any future development in that area.
No, we did not hear from them.
Okay.
What's wrong?
What happened to all the plans that were put at that site before?
All the plans?
All the plan and condos that were put at the Holiday Inn were?
So, may I ask?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry asked, what are the plans for the Holiday Inn site and why they have not materialized? Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm going to lean on Mr. Carter for him.
I saw the smile.
You backed me up.
Chairman, you get caught out.
Our economic development department is working actively on marketing and packaging the properties in that area to include the Holiday, the former Holiday Inn property. Mr. Carter?
If you don't mind, we have an RFP out right now that closes, that closed yesterday, as a matter of fact, to hire a consultant to actually put a plan together for that. We will put a team of people, we're going to have two councilmen, myself, economic development director, and two people from the economic development board to evaluate the results of that RFP, select a vendor that will help us move that project forward. We have a timeline now of 18 months to actually have that, a plan developed, and start soliciting for developers to redo that plan. So that project is moving forward now.
As to the chairman's comment on the, on the Holiday Inn site, that's the economic development authority at this point, and the economic development department is aware of the application.
Can we define a "where"? Have they made comment?
Yeah, they've dealt with the applicant themselves.
Okay, so they are in favor of it?
They're not in opposition.
Okay.
Well, that's a good word to use.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner G., while Ms. Malzone is present, let's move forward and consider the use permit application as well. So Mr. Riggs requests a use permit to operate a seaplane base at 10 Crawford Parkway in the downtown D1 Special District T6 zoning sub-district. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown uses. The property is owned by ST Tybore LLC and is further described as Tax Parcel Map 10, Parcel 7.
Good afternoon again. The next application is UP2403. This is a use permit application concurrent with the previous zoning text amendment. It is a request to operate a seaplane base at 10 Crawford Parkway. The parcel at 10 Crawford Parkway is approximately 20 acres in size and is zoned downtown urban core or D1T6. The property largely consists of piers constructed on pilings over the Elizabeth River. The property is utilized as a marina and an existing restaurant operates from the largest pier. The Portsmouth Naval Medical Center is located to the north of the subject property, a multifamily development, and the Elizabeth Ferry, North Landing Ferry Terminal, both zoned D1T6, are located to the south. The Waterside District in the City of Norfolk is located across the Elizabeth River to the east, and single-family and multifamily residential uses zoned downtown urban center or D1T5 are located to the west. The applicant proposes to operate a seaplane base from the marina at 10 Crawford Parkway. The seaplane service will offer both on-demand charters and seaplane tours. No exterior improvements will be needed to accommodate the use, and no fueling from the marina will be required. Seaplanes will not be stored at the marina overnight. The existing dock will be utilized for temporary mooring and loading and unloading of passengers and cargo. Seaplanes will taxi between the seaplane dock and a designated area within the Elizabeth River for takeoff and landing. Proposed seaplane operations may consist of up to five flights during daylight hours. The applicant indicates that takeoff and landing operations will not significantly impact sound levels in the area and will produce minimal wake. The proposed flight path goes through the Hampton Roads Transit Passenger Ferry Route and is in close proximity to multiple military installations, including Norfolk Naval Shipyard, Kearney Island, and the Portsmouth Naval Medical Center. The takeoff and landing area is also within the jurisdiction of the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Due to the proposed location along the Elizabeth River and the nature of the proposed use, the applicant and city staff participated in community outreach to engage these affected parties. The United States Army Corps of Engineers required the applicant to submit an environmental assessment and issue a finding of no significant impact. Several parties provided comment during the environmental assessment review process. At this time, several agencies, including the Department of the Navy and the United States Coast Guard, provided comments detailing the necessity for real-time communications during proposed seaplane operations. The Navy provided a list of comments and concerns related to flight operations that staff have recommended be conditioned as part of the use permit approval. The letters submitted by HRT, Hampton Roads Transit, and the City of Norfolk in opposition to this request discussed during the previous application also apply to this application, as do the two letters received in support. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates 10 Crawford Parkway for mixed-use downtown uses. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of the applicant's request. With the recommended conditions, staff finds that the proposed use is appropriated at this location and meets several goals of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan for this area. The proposed seaplane base will create a unique recreational attraction in the downtown area while having minimal impact on the surroundings. Seaplane activity within the navigable waterway, while not regulated by the city, is heavily regulated by other federal agencies, such as the United States Coast Guard and the Federal Aviation Administration. Recommended conditions included in the staff report are intended to further address concerns raised by the Department of the Navy and other potentially affected parties. That concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Okay, commissioners, any questions from the use permit standpoint?
Do we know how many seaplanes will be able to operate out of this base?
Right now, there's no condition that it's limiting the number of seaplanes at the proposed marina.
Okay, from how it's built right now, how many do you predict can be there at one time?
I believe the application, I believe the applicant is only utilizing one, but you, you know, could bring that up. That's just, if there's nothing limiting the amount, then that wouldn't be limited.
Thank you.
And as it was stated, they aren't, they aren't housed there overnight either.
Correct.
So they just come in for the tour, for the charter, land, pick up people, bring them back, and then store the plane elsewhere, it sounds.
I guess I have a question. Explain to me the difference between this proposal and what I've always known as spot zoning. Is this spot zoning that we're talking about here?
So spot zoning refers to if it was a rezoning of a parcel that is not in conformity with its surrounding area, like, for instance, if you were to rezone one parcel to industrial when it's surrounded by urban residential. So this is not a rezoning, but rather a zoning text amendment would be the difference. Thank you.
And you previously said that there's going to be minimum oil spill, correct?
I did not say that.
I said that.
Okay, I would just, I'm just trying to see if you said that prophetetically or not. That's where we got there from. Who is responsible for if any accident was to occur?
Um, through the things I read in the application, the applicant would be responsible, but he has a career in this, and I would definitely send those questions this way.
Can I add something to that?
Yes.
Please do.
It all depends on the location of the accident.
Yes.
Okay. No, absolutely, he's supposed to be responsible, you know, monetarily.
Yeah.
However, if it happens on land, we're going to respond. Happening in the water, Coast Guard is going to respond. Happening in Norfolk, Norfolk is going to respond. Just depends on the location of the accident.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Thankfully, none would ever happen.
Commissioner?
Did the Army Corps of Engineer, is that who performed the environmental impact assessment?
Yes, so that's who reviewed it and issued the no significant impact. I believe a private entity is the one that performed the environmental assessment.
All right, and it is your recommendation to approve both the zoning and the use permit?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, may I?
Yes, of course.
I just want to direct Ms. Malzone. Would you repeat the comment about refueling and the number of flights a day? I think that speaks to Commissioner Curry's comment about fuel.
I know, yes. So the applicant indicated that there would be no refueling at the marina. He stores his seaplanes at an alternative location overnight, and I believe that's where he plans to do his refueling outside of the city. And then, I apologize.
Five flights a day.
And up to five flights a day is what he is currently approved for from the United States Army Corps of Engineers.
Where is his closest other base, sea base?
I'll defer to him on that. I believe it's in Newport News would be the closest distance.
I mean, I know that's where he's located, but is that where the sea base is located? I thought that was his mailing address, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's where this operation, physical.
Right.
Those planes are operated. I was just wondering.
So he's here?
I do believe it is Newport News, but we can clarify with the applicant.
It's up to you.
And the applicant is here. If we want him to go ahead and address that now, we can?
For me, I'll wait.
Okay. Well, he knows, he knows the questions that will be covered.
I mean, ain't like any hospital would make the water even worse than what it is.
It's a great water.
I mean, amazing contaminated water.
Any additional questions, commissioners?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Commissioner G., the next agenda item is use permit 2503, and it is a request by Ms. Brown to operate an entertainment establishment on a portion of the property located at 2012 Victory Boulevard, the parcel, I'm sorry, Victory, 2012 Victory Boulevard and 4806 George Washington Highway. The property is owned General Mixed Use, GMU. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as mixed-use, and the property is owned by Washington Victory LLC, and it's further identified as Tax Map 456, Parcel 1.
All right, good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Patrice Branch, and I'm a planner with the City of Portsmouth. UP2503 is a request for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment as a part of an existing restaurant located at 4806 George Washington Highway within the Williams Court 1 Shopping Center. The subject parcel is approximately 16.6 acres and is zoned general mixed-use. The shopping center was constructed in 1984 and contains a one-story multi-unit commercial building. Bar 9 is situated on the eastern wing of the shopping center, which is immediately adjacent to the Williams Court Shopping Center. The surrounding areas consist of predominantly commercial and residential uses. Residential uses such as single-family dwellings zoned urban residential can be found to the north. Commercial uses zoned general mixed-use can be found to the south, east, and west. The proposed entertainment establishment will operate as part of an existing restaurant and will feature live entertainment, such as a DJ, jazz musicians, live band performances, poetry and spoken word events, comedy shows, open-mic nights, game nights, sip-and-paint events, karaoke, and private listening parties. An approved use permit is required to operate as an entertainment establishment within the general mixed-use zoning district. The subject unit is approximately 3,220 square feet. The dining area is approximately 2,020 square feet, and the food prep slash kitchen area is approximately 918 square feet. The design plan shows a floor plan that allows for a capacity of about 144 occupants. Currently, the restaurant operates Wednesday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. The applicant states in their narrative that the hours of operations are subject to change based on the monitoring of peak sales times. The live entertainment will be scheduled after 6:00 p.m. daily when nearby businesses have when nearby businesses have closed for the evening. On nights when the entertainment is scheduled, the applicant plans to utilize private security agencies as well as a local law enforcement. Security personnel will be on-site daily after 7:00 p.m. with additional guards present during the entertainment events based off of the occupancy load. The applicant's narrative also states that they have contracted a security agency that has a security plan in place for all events. Additionally, Bar 9 has contacted the Portsmouth Police Department to have officers monitor the parking event parking area during events. Planning staff recommends approval of the applicant's use permit request with conditions. The recommended conditions include it, but are not limited to regulations on entertainment hours, capacity limits, noise ordinance compliance, and a submission of a security plan. The regulations seek to address concerns that were brought up during City Council regarding event space banquet halls and entertainment established uses, as well as concerns from the chief of police while trying to mitigate potential issues. The proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan as the William Court Shopping Center is designated as commercial. Therefore, the use as a restaurant with live entertainment is appropriate in the proposed location. And to date, the planning department has not received any public comments. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any comments.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. A quick question from me first. The 144-person capacity, is that designated by the fire marshal?
It's with building official, based off of the occupancy.
And is that set before or after construction? Because that bar is huge, and I'm very familiar with this location. I'm just trying to imagine 144 people in this venue.
So from my understanding, when they apply for an occupancy letter, they base it off of the floor plan, and that determines the capacity.
Okay.
Maximum capacity.
Yeah, and so they said they're going to they're going to use the Port Police Department to patrol?
The parking lot.
And private security to assist them patrolling the property?
For their interior, the outside security plan.
So I mean, they are open and operating right now?
As a restaurant.
As a restaurant. Though I did see security outside when I drove by the other day. So I know they, as that is a popular shopping center for entertainment at this time. And this previously was a sports bar called Scoreboards. Yeah. Is it the other, the one with food lines at the end of that building? So it's an area that's already highly patrolled, honestly. Thank goodness our police department understands the amount of traffic that's coming through there, so they've been keeping an eye on it. So just so you guys understand where it is located.
So in the proposed condition here, it says prior to commencing operation, the operation should submit the security plan to the zoning administrator. And then in the comment section, the police department did make comments about the security. So we're saying that they already have security, but the police chief wants additional security or private security instead of utilizing them? Have you seen the security plans, Mr. Boone?
I haven't asked yet.
So that's a new condition that we're now adding for event spaces as well as entertainment establishments. They, with the condition, they will submit a security plan to the zoning administrator, which is straight on to review.
So they already have a security plan though? They already have security there?
So they stated that they have contracted with a security agency who has a security plan in place for their events. They have not been provided that, but a part of their condition that will have to show or provide a security plan for their events.
Okay, so just from the police comment, does the police chief know that?
Well, I mean, just any business, you're going to want to have your security plan no matter what. As a condition to this use permit, we're saying we want to make sure there's a security plan in place. So they're not mutually exclusive from one another. We're just saying if you want the ability, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if you want the ability to do live entertainment and these other entertainment portions, you will need a security plan established that we're aware of.
Correct, correct. So my thing is, we said that there was already Portsmouth cops already there?
Just that general area, which is just a best practice for policing.
Okay, because he, police chief mentioned here that, hey, with this establishment, it may create greater law enforcement presence. But if they're already in that vicinity, it may not. That's all I'm trying to.
I mean, this is the fifth venue of the sort in that shopping center.
Okay, got you, understood.
Or in those two shopping centers.
And then, I don't know if you remember this, we actually had a use permit in this area, actually the next building over to the right, and there were homeless people there at the time. Do we know if there's still homeless people there?
No record.
Okay, just pointing out those things if we're talking about security. And they have their own security plan, but now we're bringing alcohol onto this.
And I get that, because I want to make sure it was clear, because I know the objective for all of us is to ensure that our people are safe and secure. But also, we just can't put all this on the establishment, because people have to learn how to have emotional intelligence. And so, I mean, and because I'm very concerned about security, private security, but I want to make sure that we're not going to crucify businesses that we need enforcement because other people can't hold their liquor well or don't know how to handle themselves with emotional intelligence. So I get the fact of security that is very imperative that we have that, but also people need to practice emotional intelligence and know where they can hold, where they can't, when they're home, and we can't control that. But I want to make sure we're not going to crucify establishments that we need in this area for jobs, security, and at least have some type of good food in the city of Portsmouth.
And I will say that it's our responsibility to make sure that the due diligence is being done by the business owners. So I think that's kind of the litmus test. So we said it too, have they done what they should to make sure that prevention happens? And then, of course, prevention. And then, of course, the people, as the individuals, will have their individual abilities to break those, that common sense.
Yeah, right. Is that age requirement for when they're going to do?
They did not propose any age requirements.
I believe that's regulated by the ABC too, as well. Yes, Commissioner G.
Let me weigh in on this. All that my fellow commissioners are saying is wonderful. But here's the deal. Here's the reality check, and you all know it. Portsmouth police can't be everywhere. We know this. So we are going to have to impress on the owners of this establishment that they will have to provide very adequate security. Not only adequate, but those who are licensed by the state of Virginia to carry a weapon. Those are my comments.
Commissioner, is any additional?
We can pass out holy water.
We could pass holy water.
Some prayer calls as they walk in, anointing. Whatever we need.
Whatever else.
No additional comments?
For useful ones.
No additional useful comments? We can move on, yes, please.
Thank you.
Commissioner G., members of the Planning Commission, our next agenda item is the City of Portsmouth Planning Commission Annual Report. It's a requirement of the Code of Virginia specifically. Sorry. Specifically, Code Section 15.2, 2221, requires that the Planning Commission submit annually to your governing body, the Portsmouth City Council, an annual report outlining the operations within the Portsmouth Planning Commission over the course of the year, and that is to be submitted by September 1. We placed that annual report at your seats today. We'd asked that you would review it, and if you have comments, if you would share that with staff, and we will be submitting it with your approval before the September 1 deadline. Ms. Malzone, I'm really responsible for putting the report together. She did an excellent job. If you look through it, when you peruse the report, I think my review of it, you know, with the Planning Commission meetings isolated one month at a time, but if you look at the big picture, we've actually done a lot and accomplished a lot over the course of the year.
Will we also receive a digital copy of this?
It was with your.
Was it?
It was attached to the package.
Okay, perfect.
If you need me, if you need me to resend, we will, we can.
It might be in my one note.
In my app.
We'll take care of that. We'll make sure that you get a copy out there.
Thank you.
All right, ready to move on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I've asked Mr. Boone, our zoning administrator, to discuss the proposed resolution that we're going to ask the commission to consider at your official public hearing meeting, and if we would defer to Mr. Boone for the resolution regarding a proposed zoning ordinance amendment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Travago, zoning administrator here for the City of Portsmouth. You have received a resolution to direct staff to prepare zoning ordinance amendments that will help us regulate the entertainment establishments throughout the city. Throughout this, from time to time, the City of Portsmouth ordinance merits evaluations and considerations of modifications to its living documents, which is our zoning ordinance. This amendment before you today is going to help us input, if you will, some teeth into our ordinance to help us regulate the entertainment establishments in the city. Those requirements are, excuse me, those will include some requirements for the approval pertaining to restaurants, entertainment establishments, and clubs. Also, it will allow the zoning administrator to have approval processes in place to remedy those things that go against the ordinance when there's that enforcement needed and action is needed. And also, it will address any additional issues that staff determines to be reasonably required to require the consideration of amendment to the zoning ordinance. So we're asking you to consider this resolution that's going forward for our entertainment establishments within the City of Portsmouth.
Commissioner G., we're going to ask that the Planning Commission approve this resolution, which will allow staff to move forward in proposing the text and the specific language in consult with the city attorney's office for the regulation of entertainment uses.
Thank you. And to the point of the last use permit, this is very timely, as we're seeing more and more use permits coming through for entertainment establishments. Thank you.
Yes. While Mr. Boone is still at the podium.
Knock him out.
Yes, so the next item on the agenda is just a quick review of the items that will be considered by the Portsmouth Board of Zoning Appeals at their April 23 meeting. As we have implemented over the course of the year, it is a code requirement that we share this information with the Planning Commission. And if you choose to provide feedback to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we will convey that to them.
Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. As Dr. Russell has stated, pursuant to Section 15-2, 2310 of the Virginia Code, the zoning administrator is required to notify the local Planning Commission of applications received for special exceptions and variances. For the upcoming April 23, 2025, Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing, we have five agenda items that are scheduled for consideration that needs to be brought before you. Four requests are for special exceptions under zoning ordinance Section 40.2, 535, subsection B, subsection 13. To reduce the minimum required interior side yard setbacks for the construction of detached single-family dwellings on non-conforming lots measuring approximately 30 feet in width or less. And we have one request for a variance under zoning ordinance Section 40.2, 534, subsection B, subsection 2, to reduce the minimum required corner inside yard setback from 10 feet to 3 feet. The first item that we have is 2129 Effingham Street, and that is for a variance request to reduce the corner inside yard setback from 10 feet to 3 feet, and also for the special exception request to reduce the interior side yard setback from 7 feet to 3 feet. The next item that we have is 3519 Blaine Street, and they are requesting a special exception to reduce the interior side yard setback from 7 feet to 4 feet. The next item that we have is 2110 High Street and 2114 High Street, and they are both requesting a special exception to reduce the interior side yard setback from 20 feet to 3 feet. These are the items that need to be brought before you. I have received any questions or entertaining questions, if there are any, at this time.
Commissioner, is any questions?
Thank you.
That includes the formal items on our agenda.
Perfect, all right. I've seen it, it includes formal items. We have a few minutes until we need to be back in there, so feel free to make your way as you may.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, April 1, 2025, in the Portsmouth City, the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the March 4, 2025, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March 4, 2025, public hearing, and you will be voting electronically. Six. The minutes are approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, May 6, 2025, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phones at this time, if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item, HSND-25-01 Prentice Park. D. Peace Branch requests an honorary street name designation to designate a portion of Randolph Street as D.A. Peace Senior Way in recognition of D.A. Peace Senior, former pastor of Zion Bethel United Church of Christ in Portsmouth. The property is public right-of-way owned by the City of Portsmouth. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. The staff coordinator is Rhonda Russell. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you all so much for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of what my family and I are desiring to do, which is a street name change and I are desiring to do, which is a street name change for the portion of Randolph Street that you see over here on the screen.
Excuse me. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I do apologize. I am D. Peace Branch. My address is 4421 Templar Drive in Portsmouth, Virginia, 23703. I know that I have five minutes, so I'm going to definitely be mindful of my time. But I do want to just share some highlighted information. You already have the narrative here. I am a 45-year resident of Portsmouth, and I am requesting the street name change in the Prentice Park community, as we do desire to have one block of the portion of Randolph Street from its intersection with DeMorn's Avenue and heading eastward to where it ends at Lansing Avenue changed to D.A. Peace Senior Way. I'm inclined and so delighted to ask for this change in honor of my father, DeBloming Atwood, as he was also a 40-year resident and major contributor and supporter to the city of Portsmouth and its residents. During his time here, he affected innumerable lives and had a major positive impact on the city at large. Until his passing in November of 2019, he was the pastor of Zion Bethel United Church of Christ located at 1617 DeMorn's Avenue, which is situated at the northeast corner of the intersection where D.A. Peace Senior Way would begin. This church became one that many often called the friendly church on the corner, and I definitely believe that that was also for the character of which my father displayed. We moved here in 1980 from North Carolina and happily found our home here, and as you can see, I still stayed. So we definitely are very proud to be those that are residents of the city of Portsmouth. And just some of the things that my father did, he allowed the church to be used for a place that everyone was welcome to come. There were times, not just from when I was growing up, but even into my young adult years, where we housed vacation Bible school, not just for our members, but also for those kids in the community that would come and that would share. We had up to, you know, over 100 children that would come, and we would feed them and also their parents, if they would like to come as well. We provided transportation. There was also noonday prayer that we scheduled under my father's leadership for those that could not come on Wednesdays. There was a time for seniors to come and do Bible studies on Mondays. There was wrap time for kids to come on Saturdays to just kind of pique their interest about things that they wanted to do with their lives, and that he would ask them what their aspirations were, and he would even help them with those things. We had trunk-or-treat events. We had back-to-school rallies, Easter egg hunts. All of these things were not just for the members of my church, but they were also for the members in the community as well. We also had times where we would feed the hungry. We also had times where we would home the homeless in those winter months where our church would become people's homes. We had beds and pillows and all those things, and where my father would schedule for those of us that were members to come in and have watch. You know, we would take turns, making sure that the people that were staying there were safe and that they had a warm place to stay, and also food was served as well. One of the highlights of my dad's time was when he started a drug abuse and substance abuse ministry. It was recognized by the Portsmouth Drug Court Program that if they finished coming to the, and attending what we had set up at my church, they would, they would be able to graduate from the program. Brighton, Prentice Park, Truxton, and also the product communities have all been positively impacted by the South Side interdenominational religious correlation that my dad started. And we would have several times where we would meet a year to raise funds, to pay people's mortgages in times of need, rent, and also public utility bills. My father was not just someone who said these things in public, but he was also an amazing husband, father, and grandfather as well to people who live in Portsmouth as well as abroad. He chaperoned many of my children's times of field trips and things like that at Sweethaven, at Churchill Elementary. He read to children at West Haven, at Churchill Elementary, and also at Mount Herman. There were just many things that he displayed, and I feel like this honor is certainly one that he has due. I know that there are often times where people say things, and it's just words, but these words are certainly from my heart, and these words are certainly ones that reflect the person that he was, again, as I stated before, before the people and also at home. Even though we are definitely of Christian belief, one of the also highlighted times in my dad's pastoring was when he joined with a Muslim, another Muslim leader, and we did a drug march, and it was right before he passed away. I guess I would say little did any of us know that less than two months from that time, he would find, you know, he would not be with us. But to have 200 men together walk the streets and encourage people to get off of drugs and do better with their lives was one of the things that my dad certainly did believe in all, not just that just looked like him, but also people that he knew were in times of need. So I am asking that you all would consider accepting my request on behalf of my family. And if you guys have any questions, I will certainly answer you at this time.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Jigots?
I need the blue button. No. Thank you for this opportunity. I feel privileged to be able to sit among the commissioners, to be able to vote for Reverend D. Peace, the street naming of that portion of Randolph Street. And it's not a conflict of interest because it's what I know from growing up in the area that I've always called Piedmont Heights. You may not even know Piedmont Heights, but Piedmont Heights are buts to Prentice Park. And certainly Reverend D. Peace was an activist, a Christian activist, who changed lives, who changed many lives, those who were downtrodden, those who were drug addicted, those who were homeless, and those who needed to be fed. We know that about Reverend D. Peace. I know the street will just be D. Peace, but I just want to, you know, I considered it a privilege to be able to hear his, you must be the youngest. Are you the youngest?
Yes, ma'am.
You got to be because, and I'm, I'm full disclosure, Karen is my sorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that does not negate me from being able to vote on this without a conflict of interest. It's just that I know the family very well because of the types of energy they have put into making the Prentice Park community better than he founded, better than I founded, and that's what we have to do. When you're in a urban city, you have to do all you can to make your area better than you founded. Thank you, and I will be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioners, any additional questions or thoughts? Hit your RTS button. Okay, great. Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item HSD-25-01. We have no registered speakers. However, if there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward now, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Is there any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Chairman, I so move to approve HSD-25-01.
I second.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and a second to approve, to approve HSD, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Our next item, UP-25-03 George Washington Highway. R. Brown requests a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment on a portion of 2012 Victory Boulevard parcel designated as 4806 George Washington Highway in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Washington Victory LLC and is further identified as tax map 456 parcel 1. The staff coordinator is Patrice Branch. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, commissioners. First and foremost, I thank you for having me here to hear me out today. My name is Renata Brown. My address is 3408 Bart Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23707. I am here as the owner managing member of Bar Nine, presenting myself for entertainment license for the establishment. I'm a Portsmouth native. I was born and raised in Portsmouth, so why not bring business back to Portsmouth? I own residential group homes where I already operate business in Portsmouth, and I've been owning those since 2008, so I'm not new to business or the city. I am here, basically, to answer any other questions that you all have. I know that you did have some questions about the security when we were in the other room, and I wanted to let you all know that we have security daily on each day that we operate. I wanted to bring in extra security to make sure that not only my customers feel safe, but my staff as well. So security comes in every day at 6 PM to make sure that no one brings weapons in, guns, knives. We don't do cigarettes, chewing gum, and other things after 6 PM. And I've also put in an application, I've been in contact with Lieutenant Branch from the city of Portsmouth about adding extra police patrol when we're having events and things on the weekend.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any other questions for this applicant? Please press your RTS button if you have any questions, so we can call upon you.
Not a question, but I think you've answered it because security obviously has to be first and foremost.
Yes, ma'am.
For the residents, for the city of Portsmouth. It is so important, and I believe from what I've heard about the project and the fact that you've been in bits, how long have you been in the entertainment business and as far as the restaurant goes?
Well, I've been in restaurants for four years now because I have another restaurant in Newport News. It's called Seven Bistro.
Okay.
So this is our second restaurant location.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no additional questions, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-03. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? If not, we're in need of a motion by pressing your RTS button, waiting to be called on, as well as a second. Commissioner Curry?
Yes, Chairman. I so move to approve UP-25-03 with any conditions?
Commissioner Jigots?
I second the motion.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-25-03, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of 6 to 0 with conditions. Our next item, Z-24-02 Citywide. S. Riggs proposes to amend City Code Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance to include seaplane base to list of users require a use permit to operate a seaplane base within a given zoning district and such additional modifications as may be deemed appropriate. The staff coordinator, Valerie Malzone, and I see the applicant is already at the podium. You may proceed.
Thank you so much. My name is Sam Riggs. I live at 84 Lakeside Drive, Newport News, Virginia, 23606. I'm the father of a wild little four-year-old, so I typed this up last night and have time to finish memorizing it, but I'm going to read this to you guys. First, just want to say we moved to the Hampton Roads area to bring this here. We've lived in Texas, Alaska, South Louisiana. My wife is an EMS helicopter pilot. She flies out of West Point. We're an aviation family. But without further ado, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Sam Riggs. I'm the founder and CEO of Coastal Seaplanes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I stand before you not just as a business owner, but as someone who believes deeply in the future of Portsmouth and its potential to lead, to adapt, and to thrive by embracing innovation that honors its storied past. What Coastal Seaplanes brings to Portsmouth is new to this region, but it's a well-established, proven model in other great coastal cities around the world. From Seattle to Vancouver, Miami to Manhattan, seaplanes have safely and seamlessly served their communities for generations. Portsmouth is one of the last major east coast waterfront cities without this kind of service, and we're here to change that. I believe the time is now. This isn't just about transportation. It's about connection, connection between communities, between economies, and between people and places. Coastal Seaplanes was built on the water for the water. Operations are designed not to compete with the city, but to strengthen it, to amplify Portsmouth's identity as a historic, forward-looking waterfront destination. The effort to bring this service here has been no small task. It's been over a year in the making, this specific seaplane base. We've worked tirelessly to comply with the full scope of federal regulations. Coastal Seaplanes is now fully authorized under the FAA and the DOT to conduct scheduled and chartered interstate operations, and we've received direct approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to operate within the Elizabeth River. We're here for the long haul, and we're committed to operating with the highest standards of safety, transparency, and community engagement. Change can feel uncertain. I know this is new, but this isn't change for change's sake. This is evolution rooted in tradition, built on hard work, and driven by the spirit of connection that defines Portsmouth's past and will shape its future. I thank you for your time, your consideration, and the opportunity to contribute to the next chapter of this remarkable city. I know there's a lot of questions that got answered or asked in the work session earlier. I took note of them best I could. I just want to start addressing them right from the top. U.S. Coast Guard, we have been invited to be a member of the Harbor Safety Committee, where I serve alongside the Coast Guard and other maritime stakeholders in the Hampton Roads area. We've been lucky enough to work with some great guys from the Coast Guard and some great gals. We have developed a seaplane safety page on our website to help other mariners understand seaplanes and how they operate in this area. As far as regulation and the Coast Guard's role in that, they do see to it that aids to navigation are approved or unapproved or maintained. We don't require additional aids to navigation. We do have a right to operate on the water that they will not impede with, but we do have to comply with the U.S. Coast Guard Rules of the Road, also called the COLE regs. There's a little differentiation in there, but we won't get in the weeds too much, except that when we're on the water, we are a vessel by federal standards. So we also have to make sure that we don't impede the navigation of other vessels. We sort of fall as low man on the totem pole. So having operated in places like the Pacific Northwest, Alaska, cities like New Orleans, incredible places, we do feel this is the perfect place for this. Places like Manhattan on the East River, where they operate seaplanes all day, every day, are, echo what we have going here, a vibrant waterfront that would benefit greatly from our services. Oil and gas, so seaplanes don't have anything that protrude into the water to emit oil. That was a great question because that was specifically addressed in the environmental assessment that was conducted by Waterways, Rebecca Francis, who's an environmental specialist and biologist. Fueling, we won't have fueling amenities on the premises. We don't see the need to. Generally, when we're going somewhere, we're carrying round-trip fuel is what we call it. We're also an amphibious seaplane operator, which means we can land on runways if we need to get fuel, you know. In the event of an emergency, if we had to carry, you know, a gas can down there or something like that, we would obviously seek approval for that before we did that, but that's just not something that we do. So no oil and no gas in the water for sure. Flight limitations, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers issued regulations that are pertinent to our permit for operating on the Elizabeth River. That does include five flights per day and adheres to all federal regulations. What that means is when we land, that's one landing, and there will be a takeoff, subsequent takeoff for each one of those. So the only time that we would see, you know, docking six, you know, times at the dock is if we were headed out and somebody forgot their cellphone. We'll turn around, come back to the dock and get their cellphone for them. Talking on the marine radio, we have a marine radio installed in the aircraft. We have provisions to do that through aerial aviation. We can talk on Marine 16, every marine channel there is, we can program it in there. We communicate with vessels, big and small. We've also been working with the U.S. Navy to find the frequencies that they use over here, so we'll be able to talk with them on their specific frequencies if needed. Liability insurance, we're required by the FAA as a air carrier to carry a certain amount of insurance. We do have that. That is mandated by the Department of Transportation as well. We have to have approval for that every single year to continue operating. And as far as liability on the water, you know, if we're floating, somebody runs into us, you know, we're looking at the same rules of the road, you know, the stand-down vessel, you know, is obviously the one at fault. So, but without getting into the weeds, we'll go into flight path. Flight path, I think the hotspot here is the, this beautiful south branch of the Elizabeth River as we come in approaching to the west or northwest here. We do fly by some very, I don't want to use the word tender, but very important installations. There's been a lot of discussion about different types of surveillance issues and things like that. If you could zoom out on that map, which you can't, I would show you that Norfolk International Airport is just to the north, northeast, and that flights going into runway five at Norfolk International, that flight path takes them directly over the south branch of the Elizabeth River at 1,200 feet, which is about 200 feet higher than we're generally operating in the area when we're in that specific vicinity. These flight paths were discussed, examined by the FAA when we were registering the seaplane base. And when that all entire process was finished and it came back, the FAA said, yes, we think this will work. With these certain stipulations, that means that developing a seaplane base in line with FAA definitions, things like that. We also don't do things like fly over the Berkeley Bridge. We do not fly near Cranny Island. I think that was spoken about earlier. That is a, that was picked out as a no-fly zone for us by the company ourselves over a year ago. We will fly by it, over the water possibly, but we won't fly over it. As far as the ferry route goes, that little red line does go over the ferry route. However, we will be in the air. And generally, when a seaplane's touching down, we're going to be touching down, you know, halfway down the seaplane lane. These are standard operations, in urban seaplane operations, you know, it's just, it's just a part of it. We won't, we're not going to spook anyone on the ferry. You know, we're not going to be low-flying, buzzing people. And to be clear, this will probably be the closest anyone has ever been to an aircraft, especially on the water. So it's going to take a phase of working with the community and teaching people about what we do and how we do it. But these are FAA-approved flight paths. Stakeholder input. When we developed the environmental assessment for the Army Corps of Engineers, like I said, it was about a nine-month process. Part of that nine months was ensuring that every single entity stakeholder, Norfolk included, got this across their desk. Now, whether it got to the right person or was taken seriously is a different question. I can't speak on that. However, stakeholder input was incredibly important to us. It has also led to some of the most impactful and powerful friendships that I've had in business to date. And the last thing that I'll speak on real quick is air traffic control. We speak with air traffic control, specifically Norfolk Approach or Chambers Field up north there as we're operating in the area. We also have helicopter air-to-air, and like I said before, marine radios to speak to people on the water. So this is not a cowboy operation. This is FAA-approved Part 135 air carrier operation. We are considered an airline as we provide scheduled services to the Outer Banks, and we're pleased to offer that for the first time in Portsmouth's history. Hopefully, starting this summer, you'll be able to fly straight to the Outer Banks right here from your backyard.
Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone's aware that we let you go over the five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. You were directly addressing a lot of the questions that were brought up.
Yeah.
And just to save us all time, we do appreciate that honestly.
Sure.
Instead of it having to be asked, and then we go back and forth. So thank you for that. But with that being said, I will open it to the Commissioners. Do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Riggs, for going over those questions, especially in regards to the Coast Guard. I'm actually a Coast Guard officer.
That's fantastic.
Who driven ships out of Base Portsmouth here previously. So I'm glad you notified the Watersway Management Chief about this opportunity. Just for peace of mind, to me, I know they responded in the EPA report. But if you can, just reach back out to the Watersway Management, just peace of mind, to provide correspondence that they're okay with you all. I think it's a picture after this, landing in that area.
Yeah. Well, so we do work with the Coast Guard, and we have issued what's called a notice to mariners through the Coast Guard. That is currently public and live. Mr. Justin Strasfield has helped me get that live. And with all due respect, it would be a regulatory overreach to ask them to give us permission to operate here. They don't have the authority to do that. They just, as long as we're following the rules of the road when we're on the water, not breaking the law, and not installing any aids to navigation that have not been approved by the Coast Guard or damaging aids to navigation, that is the regulatory reach of the Coast Guard.
Okay. Yep, it would just be great, obviously, like you said.
Absolutely. I can loop in on a couple of the emails of Justin and I if you'd like.
Perfect.
You know, you can see all that.
Perfect. I'm just surprised it was only for the EPA report, but they didn't have much to say in regards to this. And then can you just, for the record, explain how you're going to be able to communicate with the Navy per se? I know they had comments about communication and whatnot. Can you just do that, can you just explain that for the record so everyone's aware how you all plan to do about that?
Sure, yeah. This gentleman here from the Navy today that we've been working diligently together on communications. Disclosing ship movements is not something that we'll be able to be privy to understandably. However, we do have specific radio frequencies that we can contact them on for the security boats down the river. That would generally be in an emergency situation, but, you know, Marine 16 is the hailing frequency. We can generally get the Navy on that. If there is a specific scenario where I feel that the Navy needs to know about something that's going to happen, say, we've got a run of charters, five charters in a day. Hey, just to let you guys know, we've got this going. Is there anything that I should know about spacing that out or anything like that? That's sort of in the works, and we're developing that. Those conversations are the first of their kind, obviously, between a seaplane and the Navy in this area. So it is the feathered edge, if you will, of this. But it's exciting. It's exciting to be able to talk to them. And I'm sure the representative from the Navy today will be able to speak on that as well if you'd like.
And you're only going to be operating one seaplane?
We currently have one seaplane. Yeah, it's what you might call a proof-of-concept aircraft. It's a Cessna 206 Amphibian. We can carry up to three passengers at a time, plus a pilot and baggage. Once a company expands, we will acquire additional aircraft. But, you know, like we were talking about before, we have the five flights-per-day limitation. So whether it's five seaplanes landing once a day or one seaplane landing five times a day, that is, that's what's put in place by the Army Corps of Engineers, who ultimately has the authority to do that. The Airline Deregulation Act prohibits state and local authorities from limiting things like flight frequency, you know, services that we offer to our passengers, things like that. So that rigorous framework has already been put in place and we're utilizing it.
Thank you. That was going to be my next question. Was it five flights per plane or was it five in totality?
That's a great question. Yeah, five in total.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And if we have a scenario where we need to expand past that, we would obviously seek authorization. But that would be something like, hey, I've got an employee on the dock. We didn't have enough room for him on the last flight. I just got to go get him and get him and get out of there. That would be something that we would call an audible for, but we would not do without authorization.
And just for emergency plans, like you mentioned, if you were, if you, if there was something in the river, right, emergency plan, have you spoke with the Coast Guard if they're able to respond to a seaplane incident?
The United States Coast Guard will respond to any vessel on the water in stress.
And they have the resources for seaplanes?
We are considered a vessel by federal law by the Coast Guard. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. That's a great question.
Thank you very much for asking those questions.
Yeah, you got a, you know, God forbid, any kind of accident between watercrafts, a seaplane, anything like that. You know, even though seaplanes remain statistically the safest and most viable means of transportation on the water over history, yeah, the Coast Guard's going to be there for us. Obviously, we don't want to put undue pressure on any entity in this area. You know, but, you know, as an American company, that's what we, that's how it rolls.
Thank you very much for addressing those questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to approve, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes. I'm sorry. Tell me your name again, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Sam Riggs.
R-I-G-G-S, isn't Sam?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I did my own little research online, and I have some concerns.
Okay.
The proximity to neighborhoods down on the waterfront. That is a strong concern for the residents who live on the waterfront.
Sure.
Safety concerns.
Sure.
Now, from what I researched, these are also called float planes. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just to let you know, I did research it. And in my research, it was saying that you normally find these type of planes in rural areas, communities that are sort of isolated from, say, downtown type of developments. Now, we have a very user-friendly waterway for the different types of pleasure boats. As you alluded to, you won't be going as far as to the bridge. Am I correct?
That's correct. We won't be flying over the bridge.
You won't be flying over the bridge.
Correct.
But I have to be honest, it's a concern.
Sure.
It's a, it's a great concern for me for safety.
It's a viable concern.
And I just, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I guess, I normally try not to be a Monday morning quarterback. But on this particular, on this particular one, I have to be because it just could go left so quickly. If there's a malfunction with the aircraft, it's just so many unknown variables that could happen. And this other question I want to ask you, and I know I don't think I have the right terminology. I'm going to call it backdraft from when the aircraft takes off.
Prop wash.
What's it called?
Prop wash.
Prop.
Wash.
P-R-O-P?
Yes, ma'am. Propeller wash.
Okay, for the prop wash. I mean, that's a concern too. So I just want to give you my questions and my take on it that I guess personally I feel a different location would have been a better request. That's just my take. But thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Now, these are viable questions and viable concerns. Having, you know, being the first commercial seaplane operator on the Lower Chesapeake Bay in history, much less than Portsmouth, establishing these operations has taken a considerable amount of not only desensitization of the areas that we operate in, but a lot of teaching and a lot of showing people how this looks and how this operates. Seaplane safety, my entire life is built on it. I've got a little blond-headed four-year-old boy at the house. I can't afford to not be there for him. And every single day that when I operate, my decisions are based off of the utmost safety, not only what we adhere to at a regulatory level, but what my heart is called for. When we operate, when we chose this location, there were all kinds of things that we took into consideration: airspace, traffic frequency. I have spent more time walking around this area on the waterfront, just getting an idea of what it looks like day to day. We did bring the aircraft in and conducted six takeoffs and landings last year. No incidents, no issues at all. When we do operate near pleasure craft and pleasure boats, as you were talking about the prop wash, it's limited. It's very limited. You would, I don't even know what to liken it to. It's nothing like a hovercraft. It's nothing like a jet engine. It's very small. Even as you grow into nine-passenger turbine-prop aircraft, it's very small. However, until you see it, you wouldn't know it. And that's the important part of this, is having the opportunity to come in and establish something so that we can prove it and show it. The other aspect I want to talk to you about is urban versus rural. Urban areas have seaplane operations. One of the oldest urban seaplane operations is Kenmore Air in Seattle, Washington. They operate off of Lake Washington, Lake Union, with hundreds of boats out there every day. They are a part of the fabric of the community. And that's our goal, is to become a fabric of the community here in Portsmouth and the Greater Hampton Roads area. People see a seaplane, that's Coastal Seaplanes. We're taking them next month to the Outer Banks, or I flew them last week up to Washington. There is a little bit of this that is uncomfortable and uncertain, and I understand that. I have a lot of compassion for that. We're here to answer questions. We're here to teach. We're here to show, and we're not here to show off. We want to be a part of this community. So when you look at Seattle, you look at New York, I mean, you're talking the East River. In New York City, they've got seaplanes going in and out of there. As far as the location, I understand your concern. I can't think of a better place to showcase Portsmouth and what we're building here. I do know that it's never been done before, and it's a little spooky. But I can assure you, it's being done with the utmost care, the utmost caution, and more importantly, the utmost transparency and respect to Portsmouth.
Thank you for your
Yes, ma'am.
Feedback.
Commissioner Johnson?
You hit the button.
Oh, okay. Commissioners, are there any other questions of the applicant?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Glover?
I hope, can you hear me? I hope we have alleviated Commissioner Jiggetts' concerns. I'm not so much concerned about safety. I feel like from, and kudos to you on the presentation that you put together. That packet was impressive. You did your homework. You didn't just start on this yesterday, and it shows. I, for one, am thrilled that you chose Portsmouth. I love our city, and I would love for us to have something that no one else has. I would love for us to have something that draws people from Virginia Beach, that draws people from Williamsburg, Norfolk, wherever else. And as those people come in, they're coming right through Old Town to get to the seaplane. That's good for business. That's good for Portsmouth. So enough said. You've got my approval.
Thank you very much. We did establish five seaplane bases last year, connecting Portsmouth with places like Cape Charles, Anancock, Gwens Island, Irvington, Yorktown, the Outer Banks. It's a network, and we want you to be a part of it.
Commissioner?
I just have a question. Is there a weight requirement per passenger?
That is a great question. With every different aircraft and configuration, there's a maximum gross weight, and there's an empty weight. You subtract one from the other, you get your useful load.
Okay.
So, for example, we generally take about 650 pounds for two hours of fuel. So when we fly to the Outer Banks, there's generally not an issue. Anytime you're going and stretching it a little bit further, for example, I did a charter for a gentleman from Roanoke that had to go to the water in Baltimore. That was, he had a lot of luggage and a lot of stuff to look at for fuel, but as a pilot command, you know, that's just what we do. Do a lot of math and figuring out.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no additional questions, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Riggs.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-24-02. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. One at a time. Hold on.
Let them.
Take the number.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. My name is Ann Davis. I reside at One Crawford Parkway here in the city of Portsmouth, Unit 701. I am speaking on, in, I want this facility to be here. As a former member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a number of years, and also as a former member and chairman of the Industrial Development Authority and Portsmouth Ports Industrial Commission, I would like to explain a couple of reasons why I'm so excited about this. A number of years ago, we used to take people who were interested in coming to the city of Portsmouth on our waterway. Are you aware that 87 miles of Portsmouth borders the Elizabeth River and different creeks and tributaries? Of that, 67% is non-taxable. So welcome, my tax-paying friend. I really think that's a cachet for the city of Portsmouth. In addition to that, we have the opportunity to showcase our wonderful city. Several years ago, we had a champion news journalist named Ida K. Jordan. and she used to call this wonderful place we call home, a quaint historic seaport. If you've had opportunity to travel to Canada, to Victoria Island, and have tea at the Empress, you will see dozens of seaplanes coming from everywhere to land in Victoria Harbor just to go to tea at the Empress Hotel, which is internationally world famous. Ms. Jiggett, you talked about prop wash. Well, I want to tell you about prop wash. I weigh about 115 pounds plus or minus on any given day. And my son, for my 55th birthday, gave me a parachute jump. I have interesting children, and they have an interesting mother. To do a parachute jump out of Suffolk was not for me tandem. It was a ripcord, and that meant 40 hours of ground school. And it meant on the day of the jump that I had to wing walk out on the strut with my toe on a little platform over the wheel. Now, I was not prepared for an 80 mile an hour prop wash. And I can tell you, here's another thing that you will quickly learn when you do that. You can't fall off the strut until you let it go. And I was not about to let it go. The flight instructor said, get back in the plane. I went, what did I do wrong? He said, look, and we were over the dismal swamp because it took me too long to strut walk with my hands. So he said, we're going home. I said, I haven't jumped yet. Let's go up and let's do it again. So we went up about 4,000 more feet. Then I knew what prop wash was, and I got out on that strut pretty darn quick. And I had one of the most extraordinary experiences in my entire life. Got to tell you, prop wash should not be your main concern. Your main concern should be what concerns me as a Realtor. Every single week that I have to convince people to come and visit Portsmouth, we have an opportunity that people will come here just for the joy of being here. I heartily, heartily endorse this project and hope that I'm one of the first people on one of the first seaplanes. I thank you for your attention. I know I've kind of been a little disjointed here. I wasn't intending to speak at all. But I am excited about this. I'm excited that somebody thought enough of this city, which has a bad rap, not deserved, to say, I'm going to put my money here. I'm going to help make this a better place. And isn't that what you said we should be doing? Making it a better place than where we found it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
You can come up.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the time. My name is Rick Monday. I'm the regional manager.
Put the mic up.
Pardon?
Put the mic up.
Regional manager for SunTex Marina's. We own and operate Tidewater Yacht Marina. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's a really tough act to follow. I would like to just show our obvious support and our appreciation for all the homework that Sam's put into this project. We receive visitors from all over the world with our yachts of various sizes. We're going into a peak transient season coming up here in May and October. And the amenity that it would not only add to the marina, but the city itself. We benefit from being a port of entry through Norfolk. We receive vessels from all over the world. The tourism aspect and everything else, I just wanted to tell you how much we are in favor of it. Sam's gone miles above every presentation he's ever made to myself. We witnessed his test flights. I was with him with the Virginia Maritime Association, supported the harbor pilots and all the other people that have weighed in on this. And certainly neighbors as well. Just wanted to tell you how much we are in favor of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the marina standpoint if we can help.
Thank you so much for being here. And what was your name again?
Rick Monday.
Monday. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Monday, have you heard from any of your tenants at the marina, especially one of my favorite restaurants?
The owner of the restaurant, and Andy's another one of my tenants who will follow me here shortly, restaurant's certainly in favor, Darris and John. I have had questions from tenants on my docks and just asked if I was aware and what our position was, and I explained just what a joy Sam's been to work with. Lot of tenant of homework. It's a great question. So very little, just to be frank.
Great, thank you. Was there any additional questions? Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you. I think Ms. Davis, she brought up a good point about tax revenue. How are we taxing this use permit? Do we have any feedback on that? Are we just taxing it as business income?
Quick question for you, Commissioner Melvin. Is this for Mr. Monday, or?
No, it's for planning.
Okay, Mr. Monday, you can be, thank you.
Mr. Melvin, the property, or the applicant has a lease interest at the marina. The marina is owned by a different party, and so that property is taxed. With respect to the revenue generated from this activity, it would be associated with his business license that he'd have to apply for and acquire if and when the use permit is approved.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Andy Sutter. I own Freedom Boat Club of Hampton Roads. I'm in support of the seaplane permit. I'm a retired Navy Senior Chief. I'm a pilot, and I am a licensed U.S. Coast Guard 200-ton captain. So I'm uniquely suited to speak on the safety of this issue. One of the things that is really going to help Portsmouth is the economic growth and tourism. A seaplane is going to attract a lot of people with disposable income to come to Portsmouth. It's going to help all the businesses in the area. If marketed correctly, which I know Sam's going to do, the amount of people that are going to come from Virginia Beach through that tunnel and come into Portsmouth is going to be fantastic. Safety, we've been talking about safety. Seaplanes are one of the most highly regulated FAA. Obviously, we've just had a, you know, back in January, we had that issue. But it's very highly regulated, ensuring some of the highest safety standards. And Sam, how many hours do your pilots have? 4,000 hours of operation. So that's just, that's a lot of time. Strategic location and connectivity, because of the Portsmouth waterfront, it's ideally suited for seaplane operation. It's going to give quick access to the Outer Banks and other places. I mean, Sam operates in Seaford, Virginia, so Portsmouth can be on the map for that. Speaking of prop wash, the plane, they're very well, I have 25 boats that we operate right here in Portsmouth. We have a lot of members that come in and out. The plane is not going to make much more noise than a boat or a tugboat going up and down the Elizabeth River. So minimal impact, seaplanes, they've got very fuel-efficient engines, reduce noise. And if it's well-planned operation, which you can see from his presentation today, it's going to be a really good competitive advantage for Portsmouth if we position this thing the right way. So if you have any, I'm here for any questions regarding safety with my pilot background and my captain's background. And even though you were in the Coast Guard, we're still friends. I gotta, I gotta, gotta give you heck.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Jiggett?
Certainly, we want to acknowledge about the possible business attraction component of this. But we also have to think about those residents who live here now. Now, you sort of made reference about the noise somewhat, but I want to know more about that noise. What type of noise does it make? I see his hand up in the back, so I mean, whichever you all, I see three hands, four, five, can I get six hands?
The seaplane is not going to make more noise than the tugs going up and down here, the ones that are pushing the barges. Or let's say when the cruise ship pulls into port and they do the turnaround here with the noise, it's not going to make more noise than that. You probably have the decibel level there, so I'm stalling to give him that time. It's not, the, we operate small boats when the members come back, or the tugboats, or the tow boats that turn on in Tidewater Yacht, they're not, it's not going to make more noise. Go ahead.
Thank you, Andy. So just to speak on noise, that was a big component for me to make sure that we could capture that. So when we did those landings last year, we captured each one, and we were able to collect the data in decibels with a registered and calibrated decibel meter. So where we got, so we wanted to get residences as close to the water as we could. So we did the Pier condo on 40 Radar Street over in Norfolk. The reason I did it from the Norfolk side is because I didn't want to go on a hospital property to do it and be wandering around over there. That was basically right across the water, same proximity to it. Peak to 83 dB, so over a 30-second span, it went from baseline at 62 dB. It peaked at 83, 28 seconds in, and then was back down to 38. Now, to give you an idea of how loud that is, normal conversation is 50 to 60 dB. Residential noise, like your neighborhood, would be about 70. Heavy city traffic is 85. A lawnmower is 90. If you're looking at a chainsaw, it's 110. Sirens, 120. A jet engine is 140. I think it's pertinent to mention that the ferry, when it hits its horn coming out of there, 96 dB. So we're looking at 83 for that location. The Harbor Tower Apartments, which are here, you had a peak of 89, which is still quieter than a lawnmower. And then from Waterside, which was closer to the water and where we were kind of coming in and out of here, we also took this reading from the ends of the docks right here at the marina, 75 dB peak.
Thanks, Sam. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. Well, before you sit down, Chair, if you would just give me a little bit leeway on this. If you were to point out the negatives about this project.
Yeah.
Objectively, what would you say? And there are always negatives in every project.
Yeah. No, I could stand here and tell you there's nothing bad about it. However, anytime you're introducing something new, there's going to be friction points. One primary negative point that we're going to see is challenges on the water. And when I say challenge, I don't mean everyday challenges. I mean being challenged by a watercraft. When we operate in Chisman Creek, we had to have two community meetings specifically with jet skis about not challenging an aircraft on takeoff or landing. That is a violation of federal law. It's inhibiting with a pilot in command and performance of his duties. The important thing to get across to them was that you don't want to step out in front of a train. You don't want to step out in front of a seaplane. I will not begin my takeoff run without a clear pathway. I will not land without a clear pathway. I can see everything from the air, and I can see most everything from my position, which is elevated on the water. That would definitely be a negative that I would say, well, just take time. One of the things we've talked about doing is putting a little beacon on the seawall that we can flip a switch and it goes for two minutes. And whenever you see that flashing light, hey, seaplane's going to be taking off or landing here in the next couple of minutes. Just keep it in mind. Look up. That would be one negative. The other negative, I think, would be wake from tugboats. There is, seaplanes don't, I want to say have to adhere, no wake zones don't apply to seaplanes in the state of Virginia. It was made that way by the United States Navy when they used seaplanes continuously. The Catalinas over off of Amphibious Drive at the base there. There were provisions put in place for seaplane bases, and that was one of them. When the tugboats come through the Elizabeth River, sometimes, depending on the weight and the speed, they are pushing a considerable amount of weight, which would require us to circle until the weight calms down. Those are operational concerns. From a residential concern, it's just new. I think it's just new. Some people are not open to change, and that's, that's just a real thing. And, you know, I don't know what to say about that, except that we're all moving forward through this, through this life together, and we just got to figure it out together as a community.
Chair, I only have one more question. We, going up in this area, we know that the waterways always have the right of way. If you don't know it, just be backed up on the tunnel, the tunnel, the bridge going up.
Yeah.
The waterways traffic has the right of way at all times because the water was here before cars were. How does it work with the traffic on the waterways when there is the ferry wanting to go across from Portsmouth over to Norfolk? And there are other pleasure boats wanting to go from Portsmouth, say, towards the Berkeley Bridge. How is it navigated where you all, with your seaplane, fall in line in terms of getting the right of way to go?
We get in the back of the line.
You get in the back of the line?
Back of the line. Once everything's cleared out, we have a safe space to operate, we'll move into position for takeoff.
Is that voluntary, or is that by law?
That's federally mandated.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jiggett, one last thing. We have a lot of recreational boaters that boat out of Freedom Boat Club here in Portsmouth.
Right.
We're going to work with Sam, and we are going, when we train our new members that come out to take the boats out, we're going to train our licensed U.S. Coast Guard captains and then send out information to all of our new members and our past members to abide by the seaplane rules, and we'll do a little training for them as well. Your son does?
Yes.
What's your son's name? Well, he must be, is his last name Jiggett?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I do know him.
Yeah, well.
I'll make sure I train him personally. He's a, he's a good member.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I have to bring the mic a little bit down. I'm a little shorter than the other fellas. My name is Mark Raffegal. I own two businesses in Portsmouth. One is PMAN IT Solutions. We help large companies with mergers and large-scale IT investments. But also, we own the Incub Hub, which is on my shirt. The Incub Hub is a coworking space for business owners. We operate spaces that small business owners can use to grow and establish their businesses in the city of Portsmouth. About six years ago, when we, when I had the idea about locating my business in Portsmouth, people said, why Portsmouth? And I just moved down from the DC area, and I said, well, why not Portsmouth? And everyone had an excuse of why Portsmouth was a, was a bad idea, but I thought it was the area's best secret. To me, it was an Old Town Alexandria at an extreme discount, and I loved its charm, I loved its history, and I always wondered, why isn't there more to do here? So I, you know, stubbornly, probably against other folks' judgment, pushed forth and established the Incub Hub. And just early on, just like Mr. Riggs, there were a lot of questions. You know, well, if you attract all of these businesses to a particular location, where's everyone going to park? How many people can you possibly accommodate? And it was new. The city code wasn't written for coworking spaces. We knew in Norfolk they had them, but not here. So I said, hey, look, they figured it out there. Why can't we do it here? Similarly, their seaplane operations in other centers in the nation, they figured it out. So why can't we figure it out here? But along those lines, over the last six years, we've been able to attract 170 businesses to the city of Portsmouth. And we've now expanded operations to Hampton where there's an additional 70 business. Another operation, Newport News, where there are going to be an additional probably 100 businesses in the next few years. And I say that not to toot our own horn, but to say that I think new things are hard, and you're doing your due diligence by asking the questions that you're asking. You have to. That's your duty as, as members of this, of this board. I, like Mr. Sutter, am a pilot too, so, and I'm also a boater. So I'm also vested, not only as a Portsmouth business owners in our city, drawing the cool things, the new things that other cities and areas just don't have here to bring people to our city and to show them that we're worthy of their business. But also to attest that I've grown up hanging out in the. But also to attest that I've grown up hanging out in the prop wash of an airplane, and this is just a, I'm from Bosnia originally, and our house was in proximity to a grass airfield. And one of my best friend's dad was a skydiver, professional skydiver. And my friend Arnell and I would hang out in a prop wash of airplanes, but we couldn't go past 30 feet because our little bodies, even at the time, 50, 60 pounds, would fall over if we were too far away. We'd fall backwards, because if we were too close, we couldn't move forward. So, I say that to say that these airplanes that Mr. Riggs operates are not the airliners that we are accustomed to seeing, people blowing over. These planes produce significantly less of a prop wash. And lastly, as an InQ Hub business owner, I am privy to seeing startup businesses all the time. And some of them succeed and some of them fail. The ones that fail are the ones where the owners do not do their due diligence to plan, to seek the proper approvals, and to really study up their market. I can say with 100% confidence that Mr. Riggs did, and I think that's evident from all of the approvals that he sought prior to coming to this chamber, which is the last one on his list, but also from all the planning that he had to do. He specifically moved from Texas to this area to start this business, because he did the research and determined that Portsmouth is primed for this sort of thing. There isn't competition here yet, and he's creating a brand-new thing. So, without further ado, this is all I had to say. I'm in support of this business. I would love Portsmouth to have something else that's unique, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Frigell, I can't pronounce your last name. Could you spell it for the record for us, please?
Sure. F as in Frank, R.I.G.E.L.J.
And how do you say it, just for my...
Frigell.
Frigell.
And it's Marco with a K.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Nope. You're good.
Thank you.
My name is, I go by M.K. Nunley, N-U-N-L-E-Y. I'm a resident of Swimming Point Walk, right on the water, and I own the riparian rights in front, going in the direction of the marina towards where the seaplane will be functioning. Our small, very proud neighborhood is very excited. I don't know of anyone that is against it after they hear about it. We're excited to have something innovative and new. I think the owner of the business has done his homework and then some. I'm very, very excited to think that it's going to get more people to come and see what a wonderful city we have. I've decided to retire here. I have retired from the Navy, never lived anywhere more than six years in a row, and I'm going on my ninth year. So, the more exciting things we can do, and I think there's a lot of people that will be very happy not to be waiting in line to get to the Outer Banks, and there's excursions, it could be a gift thing, a very unique gift thing for somebody to see the city or to see the Wisconsin from the air, but that neighborhood right there is very proud. I'm kind of hoping that it might help get rid of some of the abandoned boats to clear the way for the seaplane. Anything that helps our waterfront improve its minimal environmental impact, but our neighborhood is very much for it. It's about 35 families, and we're very, very excited, so we hope that you'll go in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come up and speak with you all today. My name is Rennie Richardson. I live at 208 Swimming Point Walk, neighborhood right there that M.K. just spoke of. I certainly have nothing to add from what these good folks have had to say, this lady and the rest of them with their expertise. I'm here to present you with petitions signed by 30-some residents of the city of Portsmouth, and I know that the big concern from some of you has been noise issues. I want to tell you a little story. I was outside one day last summer, and I saw a seaplane circling, and I thought to myself, "Holy moly, Batman, here comes a seaplane." I watched him land. Fantastic. I watched him take off. Fantastic. He did it again, and he did it again, and it was a joy to see that. And I was so excited that, wow, I didn't know seaplanes came in here. So, I asked my neighbors, "Did you guys see the seaplane out there yesterday?" They said, "No." "What seaplane?" I said, "You didn't see the seaplane right out in front?" "No, we didn't see it." They were inside. They didn't hear it. They didn't look. So, I hope that will help address possibly some of the issues regarding the noise. I have lived in New York City, seaplanes all day, every day. I've spent time in the northwest, Seattle and the San Juan Islands, and it's just how people get around. And they come into these wonderful little downtown community areas, very similar to Portsmouth, and they generate excitement, they generate dollars for the city, they generate tourism, and they generate community, the ties. I am all for it, and there are 30 additional people that are all for it, most of whom live in Swimming Point, looking directly at the marina and where the seaplane will tie up, and some others in the taller buildings that you can't quite see. But I'd like to present this with you, and we are all in favor of the seaplane base. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You can bring this right here. I do want to remind everyone, including the commissioners, that this is, we do have a secondary part to this, which is, this is the zoning, and we also have the use permit. So, I'm thinking and hoping most of your comments are pertaining to both, because we would hate to go through all of these again, but we do appreciate all of your feedback.
Thank you.
I'll be real quick. So, my name is Gene Granger. I am a resident of Portsmouth. I live at 323 Court Street, which, not Swimming Point, but if you look just to the left of the water here, go about five houses down, that's where I live. So, I live in the Old Town neighborhood, right where the seaplane operations will be happening. I also work with Marco with the InQ Hub, so I've seen how new businesses can struggle to come to Portsmouth because of some of the policies and the bureaucracy we have in place, but also what happens when really creative, out-of-the-box businesses are able to succeed here and do great things for the city. I really do believe that Portsmouth is not only the best-kept secret in Hampton Roads, but one of the best-kept secrets in America. And in order for our city to continue to thrive and be the really unique, special place that it is, we have to be willing to be creative and think out of the box and be open to new ideas and embrace things that we haven't had here before. And I think this opportunity with this seaplane business and what Mr. Riggs is doing is exactly that. So, as someone who manages a business in the city, as a resident not only of the city but also of the neighborhood that's going to be directly where all this is going to be happening, I wholeheartedly support what Mr. Riggs is doing, and I urge the commission to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jiggett?
Protocol on this. Could we please have the letter from Norfolk City Manager read aloud, please? To read into the...
We're trying to decide who had the best reading voice here.
Well, okay.
May I read it?
Sure. Well, no, 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 I'm going to read this one.
I'm going to read it aloud. They're all opposed, and I should just read it for everybody?
Well, no, I have it right here, so I'm going to go ahead and read it to the body. This letter's conveyed the city of Norfolk administration's opposition of the use permit application by coastal seaplanes to operate a seaplane operation at 10 Crawford Parkway. The introduction of seaplane activities at this location would strain the capacity of the waterway that already has military, commercial, and recreation boating activities that must be coordinated to allow all function. The airspace and operations for aircraft to regularly traverse at low levels to accommodate landing of seaplanes will have an impact on downtown Norfolk with its tall structures, outdoor event spaces, and busy waterways. Portsmouth downtown D1 Urban Core T6 zoning sub-district is the most intense downtown land use. Per staff report, page four, there are vertical obstructions to include tall buildings, cranes, and sailboats, and helicopters from the two hospitals on either shore that will make unplanned arrivals and departures through this airspace. None of the other communities where this company currently operates, including York County, North Hampton County, and Matthews County, have the same vertical obstructions. In addition to these concerns, public outreach for this project not to appear to include any city of Norfolk stakeholders that operate significant businesses and operations adjacent to the landing and travel path of the seaplanes. The city of Norfolk urges you to deny this request for both zoning text amendment and related use permit to allow seaplane operation in water between our two cities. This introduces an activity that will be a safety hazard for both our communities. The reason I decided to read that is because I do feel you have addressed many of these items, and we do appreciate that coming from you at this point. I think as we look at Portsmouth business, it is important that we look at Portsmouth business and how it affects our communities. Though our neighbors are important, it is important that we do look at why we are here. One other reminder I will make is that we are a recommendation body, the Planning Commission. So, I know we stated earlier this is your last group, unfortunately not. You will go also to city council, who will have the ultimate say on this. So, I just want to remind everyone of that fact as well.
Thank you.
And I think we'll, well, because of time, we can't allow additional speakers to speak more than once. Do we have any additional speakers, though? Madam Secretary?
Seeing no additional speakers on Z24-02, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission... I need a motion and a second.
If there's no more discussion, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve Z-TAC 24-TAC 02, with any conditions if there were any.
That's for good reason.
Who made the second? I'm sorry. Just as a reminder, commissioners, make sure we hit the RTS so we can have it for the record. Thank you. She's been hitting, you haven't been aboard her all day. Ms. Glover?
Her name is...
Commissioner Glover, for a second. Okay, Madam Glover. Madam Secretary?
One moment, unreadiness.
Okay, yes.
Before I cast my vote, I want to be extremely forthcoming. As my fellow Commissioner Glover knows, I was initially very much opposed to this particular project before us. I was opposed to it. But I think what is going to help me to change my vote is that I have a background in economic development. I actually worked for the city of Norfolk in economic development. I was their first female manager hired in economic development for the city of Norfolk. And we prided ourselves on prospects who were unique to this particular area. And that was one way that we handled business recruitment and business attraction. Based on hearing the presentation, I'm going to go out on walking by faith on this, and I will be voting for the project.
No additional ready, Madam Secretary? We have a motion and a second to approve Z-24-02. Commissioners, you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Our next item, UP-24-03 Downtown, S. Riggs requests a use permit to operate a seaplane base at 10 Crawford Parkway in the downtown D1 Urban Core T6 zoning sub-district. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown uses. The property is owned by S.T. Tide Water LLC and is further described as Tax Map 10, Parcel 7. Staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative please come forward? State your name and your address for the record.
My name is Sam Riggs, 84 Lakeside Drive, Newport News, Virginia 23606. I feel like we've worn this thing out. I'm not going to drag us back through it, but, you know, the support here is massive for me and my family. Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
Mr. Riggs, I want to say I was very concerned in the private meeting about certain things, especially with the oil and everything else. Well, with your presentation and all the diligent work that you put in has eased a lot of our minds, especially with the young lady jumping out the plane behind you. I would love to be one of the first ones to ride the plane with her.
Yes, yes.
You have my dear support. Thank you for coming to the city, because we need more people like you here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Melvin?
Mr. Riggs, I'd like to mention this for the record, just so that when it goes to city council, they'll have it in the minutes and for our citizens. So, I know the concern was security, so just going to read, here's one sentence, the Rules of the Road, Rule 18 for seaplanes. You were concerned about them impeding vessels. Well, it says here that a seaplane on the water shall, in general, keep well clear of all vessels and avoid impeding their navigation, which includes power-driven vessels, selling vessels, and any other vessels on water. So, with Mr. Riggs' experience and his aviators, they'll do their best to keep out of the way of any vessels and avoid impeding their way. And then, I would just like to thank our citizens out here. I think our commissioners can agree that we will all work for you, so I'm happy to see participation here and the support for this activity. This is the most I've seen since I've been on board of commission, so thank you very much, and I hope to see something like this in the future.
Fantastic. Thank you.
One other item, just for the record. We do appreciate the petitions we've received. We'll make sure that this is packaged and sent to city council as this progresses through.
Okay.
So, I think, just want to make sure you understood that for the record as well.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
I think you can be seated.
All right.
Appreciate you all.
Commissioners, you have, oh, we've already done that? Madam Secretary?
We need to, we're in the voting. We need a motion and a second to approve... Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-03. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to speak, this is your opportunity, and you have five minutes. You may come forward. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
It's something, because somebody's hitting it, and your name is...
It's me.
No, I was just waiting for you to ask for a motion.
Okay. They switched, that's why. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, please, just a minute.
With there being no additional discussion, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Glover?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-24-03, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved 6 to 0.
Commissioners, we are not quite concluded for the day. We are in need of a motion for our 2024 annual report, for the approval of our 2024 annual report.
Chairman, I also move to approve the annual report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second to approve the 2024 annual report, and you will be voting electronically. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to approve the 2024 annual report, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero.
So, this covers the agenda as set, but I want to take this opportunity to recognize. Oh, nope, sorry, missed one, missed one item there as well. Okay, so we are looking for a resolution from the commission to direct staff to prepare a zoning ordinance amendment as presented in our packets. So, we'll take a motion on that.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Melvin and seconded by Commissioner Curry. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A motion and second to approve a resolution directing staff to prepare zoning ordinance amendments regulating entertainment establishments, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero.
So, I believe that is now concluding our agenda as set today. But I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our, one of our staff coordinators, Ms. Valerie Malzone, for her new position as Principal Planner for the City of Portsmouth. So, I believe that concludes our agenda for today?
Yes, sir, it does.
Praise the Lord. Commissioners, will there be any further business? Dr. Russell, is there any further business? Hearing no more business, this meeting is adjourned.